Be the lights on after school proclamation. Bear with me, we've got three. Whereas the citizens of the city of Abilene, Kansas stand firmly committed to quality after school programs and opportunities because they provide safe and engaging learning experiences that help children realize their full potential and support their academic growth and well being. Support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive when they are out of the classrooms. Help address key issues in our sorry, in our state such as school absentee and absenteeism, learning loss recovery and workforce development. Build stronger communities by involving students, parents, businesses and volunteers and the lives of young people. Support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive when they are out of the classrooms. Help address key issues in our in our state such as school absentee and absenteeism, learning loss recovery and workforce. You're still on? Okay. Good to know. It's like an omniscient voice coming out, it's scary. Okay. Build stronger communities by involving students, parents, businesses and volunteers in the lives of young people after school provides a solid return on investment every dollar invested in after school programs. Saves at least three dollars by increasing kids' earning potential, improving kids' performance at school and reducing crime and juvenile delinquency. Whereas after school programs provide critical support for children and youth, offering them new experiences and opportunities along with hands-on learning that may that help them learn and grow. Youth who attend after school programs attend school more often, do better in school and gain important work and life skills. These supports are all the more important today. Whereas City of Abilene is committed to the education and well-being of our youth and recognizes that quality after school programs prepare our children to become successful adults and help our community thrive. Whereas Lights On After School, the national celebration of after school programs held this year on October 24th, 2024, promotes the importance of quality after school programs for our children, families and communities. Whereas the demand for after school programs continues to grow for every child in a program for waiting to get in. Whereas many after school programs face operating challenges so severe that they are forced to consider closing their doors and turning off their lights. Whereas the city of Kansas is committed to providing expanding learning opportunities that help our children learn, grow and develop the skills essential for success in life and work. Therefore, be it resolved that the city commissioners of the city of Abilene, Kansas do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2024 as Lights On After School Day and enthusiastically endorse Lights On After School and commits our state to engage in innovative after school programs and activities that ensure the lights stay on the door and the doors stay open for all children after school. Do we have anybody here for this one? All right, and then six C, we have Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation and as Mary Cookson with D VAC.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Cookson and I'm the victim advocate with D VAC. And I'm here to read the city proclamation. Whereas domestic violence is a widespread preventable public health problem impacting all demographics of Kansas, including the city of Abilene. And whereas relationships are often counted as life's greatest treasures when tragically many are tarnished by one's feelings of entitlement to power and control over the other, resulting in violence and fear. And whereas domestic violence abusers violate an individual's privacy, dignity, security and humanity with their intentional systematic use of financial, psychological, sexual and physical coercive control and abuse. And whereas the U S Department of Justice reports domestic violence homicides compromise fourteen percent of all homicides in the U S and that women are more than twice as likely as men to be killed by an intimate partner. The Kansas Bureau of Investigation reports thirty-five domestic violence homicides were twenty-one point five percent of all homicides in Kansas in 2021. And whereas in Kansas in 2022, a domestic violence abuser murdered another person every ten days, ten hours, seventeen minutes and eleven seconds. A domestic violence abuser committed a violent act reported to law enforcement every twenty-three minutes, thirty-nine seconds. And law enforcement made an arrest due to domestic violence every forty-six minutes and forty-three seconds. And whereas D VAC served eight hundred and thirty-one victims within our ten counties, four hundred and eighty-six of which were from Saline County. And yet these numbers do not accurately reflect the total number of domestic violence victims as many were continuing to struggle against isolation and other impacts of COVID-19. And whereas we as the governing body of Abilene recognize this violence as it is inconsistent with our city's values and cannot be ignored, excused or tolerated. And whereas in declaring this month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we encourage all citizens to know the facts about domestic violence, to familiarize themselves with resources, to recognize subtle signs of controlled tactics, to act as safe support systems, to speak up against perpetrators of violence and any messages that inadvertently condone domestic violence, to get involved, to teach others and prepare future generations for healthy relationships and to donate time or resources to their local domestic violence agency.
All right, and six D, we have the Abilene Omitama Sister City Proclamation. Whereas Minori, Machi, Ibaraki, Ken, Japan and the city of Abilene, Kansas, USA entered into a sister city relationship to establish a perpetual tie between the two cities on October 3rd, nineteen eighty-four. And whereas this relationship continued through the evolution of the consolidation of the communities of Minori, Ogawa and Tamari into a new municipality known as Omitama in 2006. And whereas respect and understanding have been deepened by the close exchange of culture and friendship in this mutual relationship. And whereas the sister city relationship is part of Sister Cities International, which was founded as a presidential initiative by President Dwight D Eisenhower on September 11th, nineteen fifty-six. And whereas Sister Cities International has impacted the world stage by building bridges across nations, cities and communities around the globe in order to create and sustain world peace. And whereas President Dwight D Eisenhower held the belief that people in the long run are going to do more to promote peace than our governments. And whereas there is no better day to celebrate the fortieth anniversary of the Abilene Omitama Sister City Relationship than on the birthday and in the hometown of President Dwight D Eisenhower on October fourteenth. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Brandon Ryan, Mayor of the city of Abilene, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four as Abilene Omitama Sister City Day. In testimony whereof, I have run to set my hand and cause to be effects the great seal of the city of Abilene, Kansas, this, the fourteenth day of October, twenty twenty-four. Do we have anybody with the sister city here? All right, and with no business items, we will move right into eight A, Third Quarter Treasures Report. Finance Director Johnson.
The third quarter should be in your packet. I just would entertain any questions. This is what will be published before October thirtieth within the newspaper per statute.
We have any questions for Finance Director on that? Seeing none, we'll move to nine A, City Managers Report. City Manager Marsh.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Public Works in the county have been doing some dura patch on several streets in the last week. You probably noticed that being done on Mulberry was one of them that was done. The city removes several, will be removing several trees at the intersection of Cedar and Seventh to improve sightlines. The Police Department office area will be closed tomorrow for training. Kelsey Brand, the Municipal Court Manager, will be attending Leadership Dickinson County this this term. The Parks Department will be taking out the chain link fence at the skate park later this week. It's falling down, it's in bad, bad shape and it just collects. It'll make it easier to mow and upkeep that whole area, so. Third Street will be closed from Walnut to Poplar. This is kind of a reminder, a heads up. Eleventh meeting is a holiday and we'll move to Tuesday, November twelfth, so make sure you mark your calendars. The Parks Department has received a $5,000 grant from the Community Foundation for shade structures at the pool. The city will be submitting our local service line inventory to K D H E. Either we're working on it right now, but it'll either be today by close of business or tomorrow. It is due on Wednesday, the sixteenth. And then we met with Twin Valley today or saw a lot of their contractors and worked through some scheduling, some scheduling items and some other issues and I'll have a more of a detailed report next meeting on that.
Any questions on the City Managers Report? Seeing none, we will move to item ten A, Executive Session.
How much time we want? Ten minutes? I'm gonna need a little more than that. Fifteen, twenty? 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 We can look at each other for an extra two minutes out here instead of being called back.
All right, I move the City Commission recess in the executive session for twenty minutes to discuss matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to K S A seventy-five dash four three one nine B. One for the City Managers Quarterly Review. The regular meeting will resume in this room at four forty.
Still need a second vote.
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we do roll call vote. Commissioner Meisnerberg?
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Yeah.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. We're in executive session.
Wendy, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner Miller. I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Vice Mayor Miller, just to let you know too, we do reconvene at four forty from executive session, so we've still got about four minutes.
Okay, thank you.
We will now resume our regular meeting after executive session. No action was taken. The next item is motion to recess.
Ready to move right into the study session, everybody? Do we need a motion then? Or can we just stay in? Stay in our meeting?
I think it would be good to just formally document the transition to the study session component.
All right, I move to immediately. Move into the study session portion of our meeting.
I'll second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we need to roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller? Seeing none, we need to roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller? Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhaas?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. We will now call to order the October fourteenth, twenty twenty four city commission study session. Our first item is the sales tax special election question. Sure with.
Yeah, I can take the take the lead on this discussion. Bringing the commission up to speed on what the sports complex task force has discussed, and then I'll look to those who are part of the task force that are here. Crowd to correct me or chime in if I miss anything. So acknowledging the tax question failed in the primary election, but failed at a margin of pretty close to a fifty fifty split. Feedback that the cohort of us have received amongst the community. Many expressed confusion on on the wording of the question, specifically the terminology quality of life. Something that us on the board may understand, but not a common use of words and in common language in the community. And then also just people, people not knowing what the question was about. And so in our discussions, it's still recognized as a need. So we still have a facility need here. Again, highlighting the fact that there's underlying infrastructure issues with that facility with water, sewer, bathrooms, drainage. All those sorts of things are and lighting, big ticket items that need addressed. So it comes as a question then to the governing body up here is is always our question. Do you fix it or not? Does it go away or does it stay? And if you do fix it, how do you pay for it? And right now, with the approach at that facility has been the Band-Aid approach of fixing things as they fail. But looking long term in a way that's cost effective in the long term. That's why this question was brought to do a full, a full revamp of these facilities and to move them over by the rec center to consolidate, to gain efficiencies and to work well in that community with the fairgrounds and and all of that. And the preference of funding it with sales tax as that burden is more spread out versus property tax. So the suggestion from the task force is to pursue a special election, an in person special election. You can see in your packets, the timing of what that would look like and and then also the suggestion of the task force is the adjustment of the language to say recreational facilities versus quality of life. Anything I'm missing? So really up for discussion, what what the task force wants to hear from the governing body up here is yeah, I guess the answers of support to that question. Is this a priority for the commission to fix these facilities? The approach of continued a Band-Aid or the approach of a full revamp, and then whether that happens with property taxes or or sales taxes. So I'll look forward to hearing what the rest of you think.
Any questions or comments from the commission?
I guess some of the things that I have heard is that baseball really serves kind of a really select part of the community. And just on the sales tax question specifically, a couple of people have suggested that if we're going to ask for a sales tax, that we do projects that benefit all age groups or more age groups rather than just kind of a select sector. And so I guess I'd like the task force to kind of maybe take that into consideration. I do think, and I don't know if it was I hope it wasn't intentional, but I do think that the question was kind of weird worded ambiguously, and I think it was pretty well known that all that money was going to baseball fields. And so I think that if that's what you want to do, that's what you need to say. But I do think that some of that potentially lost on its own merits, that there's not a majority of the city right now that wants to pay for baseball fields. I would just encourage the group to really look at the comprehensive plans and make sure that those goals that are in the comprehensive plan match what we're asking for. And that's, I guess, the feedback that I've gotten from the community that I think is useful. I think marketing probably could use some help too. Just kind of how we sell it to the community if that's what we decide we want to do. I just, I think we have a risk here too, if, you know, if it fails a second time, then what do we do? Do we do we ask a third time? Do I mean, do you ask every six months until you get the answer that you want? And I just, I think you lose a lot of goodwill by taking that approach.
Yeah, and that's kind of the question of the commit commission is if if we want to make taking care of these facilities a priority. It's like if you ask the question again, and if it fails, then do we fund it with property taxes or do we just continue the Band-Aid approach or or do the facilities go away and just making that a really intentional explicit decision at a board level instead of just if it fails, then and not not explicitly talk about what the plan is with these facilities.
I think the building or the room that we're sitting in here was funded really, really strategically in conjunction with the swimming pool revamp. And I don't think that was an accident. I think there were some people that voted for the pool and some people that voted for the library and probably a couple of people voted against all of it, but it passed with kind of an overwhelming majority. And I think that projects that really serve the community are going to get approved the first time we put them in front of the electorate. And I even feel like maybe we're not doing our jobs putting the same question for the same project back in front of the same voters a second time. It just, it seems like we're not listening.
You have any thoughts?
I've heard from some community members that they they don't want property taxes to go up and they they are not interested in this. So I think I would just need to hear from more people, I guess.
Vice Mayor Miller, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. Just curious your thoughts on this.
I think it's worth a shot, maybe putting it out on vote again. Maybe making the question a little clearer and then that will give us a good idea as far as what approach we need to do, if any.
Thank you. I've stated this in the past quite a few times. I'm definitely in favor of sales tax over property tax anytime we can, because a good chunk of it does come from outside of city limits, especially with interstate and highway fifteen passing through. We do, we are able to capture capture that, which helps pay for improvements our facilities and is not completely paid for by the citizens of Abilene. I'd be fine putting it on its own standalone election or having its own standalone election. I think you get a clear representative response from from an election where they're where you're voting on one specific item. I think you you get a better feel for what people actually want on that versus getting it mixed in with a, you know, page and a half ballot. It kind of sometimes it gets lost in the mix, especially when it's the very last question. And so that's my feeling on it. I'd be fine trying trying it on on its own merits and and seeing what the public has to say.
Looks like Parks and Rec Director Timber was standing up.
I was just going to answer a couple of the things that were brought up. One of the other things we did here was people wanted us to just fix what we've got. And in looking at that, we're still in the process of that too. We're looking at just as much money as getting new or more. It was baseball, softball, soccer, flag football fields. We other also have other opportunities for other programming on those fields if we are able to do that. We also changed the wording to multi-usage or multipurpose fields because that's really what they're going to be. And we are just letting people know that so that they know that that's going to be our first focus. If there's more money that comes in, then hopefully we can use that for other improvements or hopefully we don't let the sun set in ten years. And it can keep going so we can keep using it for a splash pad or pool slide or whatever it might be that comes up. So and then the point three five percent was also confusing for people. Some people thought it was thirty five cents on the dollar. We heard that from multiple people, other people in the community did. So we also put that little example in the ballot question, just so they would hopefully see that and know that it's not quite that much.
Do you have any further questions or discussion on this?
I'll just echo Mayor Ryan's comments. That's that's my position too of wanting to put this question out again. And general support over the project because seeing how the thread of looking at things for this community is driving those sorts of programs that young families can participate in and not just young families, talking about multi-use facilities and going to Parks and Rec programs and all that, all ages participate with that when you have grandparents and and whole families out there coming together. And that's what what these facilities, that's what we do now, but this is what can ensure is sustainable for the future and is done in such a way that is a cost efficient way for that quality of life stuff. So overall, too, I want to hear those feedback. This is, I don't always explicitly say this, but wanting to hear feedback amongst the community, what what they think. Send the committee, all of us commissioners have email addresses. You can email the city manager too, that that information gets back to us. So we want to hear about it. And then just reminding where we've been in this process, this all started also with that study from Wichita State that sent a survey out to the community of of this project. So this is trying to be a really intentional, thoughtful and project that that's a good use for the money. So.
Further questions, comments, thoughts? Seeing none, we'll move into item two B wastewater treatment plant structural assessment report, City Manager Marsh.
Commissioners, earlier this year, city staff was made aware that the wet well room, which is with the the room where all the city's waste goes into the wastewater treatment plant was developing significant cracking in the walls and concrete flooring of that around the wet well pit. Staff contacted the plant architects and who recommended we contact BG Consultants to take a look at this for us. We had an initial meeting with the engineer and subsequently entered into an agreement for a structural assessment with BG Consultants and the amount of sixty eight hundred dollars and an amended agreement for a survey in the amount of four thousand dollars. Johnny Eclavia, the engineer who conducted the assess the assessment is here to give you a briefing on his findings. You will see the report in your packet. So.
Good afternoon. Again, my name is Johnny Eclavia. I represent BG Consultants on the structural side. As Ron mentioned, I was asked to come out early summer by Brad Anderson to take a look at possible floor settlement at the wastewater treatment plant process building. And as I went out there, we discovered basically two areas of deficiency. We had found cracking in the walls. And we also found what looked like wall settlement, but then you take a second look at it. So is the wall settling or is the pit coming out of the ground? If the pit's coming out of the ground, that would create a major issue because it was the main influent line is coming into that well. And if the pit's going up, it's basically making that line blow backwards and you don't want the water to go backwards. So we did a a survey to assess where the actual building was laid out and where the pipelines are flowing in. And we discovered that the wet well pit was built on native soil and the elevations where it was set to be placed was actually one inch higher than what the actual elevations of the plans called for. And then the rest of the building basically sunk down about an inch and a half to two inches all the way around the whole entire building. That caused an exterior wall and that wet well to lean out and crack. Basically, the cracking inside the interior is caused by the construction of the building. The building is basically a pre-engineered metal building with bays in it, and the exterior and interior walls are masonry walls that were rigidly attached to the rigid building. The pre-engineered metal building itself should have been allowed to move as wind blows that when that building is designed to move an inch or so back and forth because there's allowed to move. But what they had done is they attached the masonry walls rigidly to every place where it penetrated through. So every time the wind blows, you got cracks coming down your walls in all the locations. The part with the wet well itself, we had to go do some calculations because we initially thought that the wet well was coming out of the ground. But after doing our calculation, we found that it had three and a half percent sack factor of safety against buoyancy. So there's plenty of concrete there to keep it in the ground. And the rest of the building was built on ten foot of backfill because they had to build up to get to that elevation. So over time, basically, the building has been settling and it's due to several issues. Naturally, it's going to settle over time, but then throughout Due to several issues. It naturally is going to settle over time, but then throughout history here in the last. Ten fifteen years, we've had a lot more seismic activity than we counted on in this area alone. I'm doing a similar project down in uh Salina for the National Guard assessing out in the summer and found some cracks that are about maybe an eighth of an inch thick. Two months later, they said they had another earthquake in this area, which is only nine miles south of where this building was. And we go back out and look at. And the crack was like a half an inch wide now. So s- the seismic activity around here is just like creating havoc on all the buildings in this area. So that could be one of the causes for settling, but we are highly recommending, one, to have the pipes. Uh scoped with a camera to kind of check the integrity of it. If there's any stress fractures in there, we'll see it. And that would give an indication that, yes, the the wet well itself was moving up slightly. Or if the condition's all good, then it's it's staying put in place. And then the other recommendation would be to go relieve all of the the rigid connections of the masonry to the rigid, the. Pre-engineered metal building so that it can be allowed to move and then we can repair the cracks and that would get rid of all that. And then the third alternative is to. Stop the building from settling. Okay, there's two fold on that where you can either just arrest the building around the wet well. And fix that wall so it doesn't settle anymore and let the rest go, or you arrest the whole building. Of course, doing the whole entire building is kind of. Uh uh not financially feasible, but arresting that little settlement. You don't, you're not trying to raise it back up. You're just trying to keep it from settling anymore. Then you could take out the concrete and level it back up. And that would bring it back into conditions, but uh other than that, you guys have any questions about that?
Any questions for Johnny?
I'm looking at your. I what I think is your opinion of probable cost?
Yes.
Um and I think there's one here that's fifty eight thousand dollars. That's to cut out the rigid connections, fill new openings with flexible fire-rated foam sealant. Foxy repair cracks, create slip connections between the CME walls and the girts and scope the lines. That's fifty eight thousand dollars.
That's correct.
Is that your recommendation to the commission?
Yes. That's one of the repairs we definitely recommend to do. There's like three repairs in there. The first repair should be done no matter what. That's to relieve the cracks and repair the cracks. And then definitely scope the line to make sure your your sewer line is not going back though, backflow. And so that fif- uh fifty eight thousand you just mentioned, that's for that. And that should be done no matter what. The other one, the reason why I say that you have to scope that, you have to verify that that is not backflowing because if that starts backflowing, you have a bigger problem. Okay?
Did you not scope the lines already?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
That's that that's what our recommendations were.
And so can you explain the rest of your suggestions here?
So the 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 middle pricing, let me see, but yeah, right there. The the second recommendation, uh second quote that we gave you was for a hundred eighty one thousand dollars. That's to arrest. That uh wet well room only. And basically, you're putting some helical piles around those walls that surround that and you're basically. Placing them underneath the foundation and the helical piles, which is basically like a corkscrew that goes down in the ground. Goes down deep enough to where it gets enough torque to resist it settling down anymore. Sometimes you can get it to get enough torque to raise it back up. But most of the time you can only get maybe a fraction of that to go back up. But the whole idea is to arrest it so it doesn't settle anymore. And then you leave the rest of it alone. And that's where that comes out to be a hundred eighty one thousand or so. Just arresting that. The one for the five hundred twenty three thousand dollars is to arrest the whole building. Which it's so costly because you have a generator pad out back. The back wall is eight feet down below the main floor level, which means you have to get rid of the generator pad. Drill out underneath the whole foundation and then put your piles down there. And that's just too cost prohibitive, I believe. So I would recommend or BG would recommend that middle one to arrest the the middle one around the wet well so that it will not settle anymore. That would also help in aiding fixing that one wall that's coming apart.
So uh as potential solutions, we're looking at um. One is kind of independent of two and three. And then it's so it's like, do want your suggestion as one no matter what. And then pick two or three, but then most likely two is the one to go with because it's more cost effective.
Right, so your your third option is do nothing.
Right, yeah.
You do nothing, the cracks are just gonna get bigger and your building is still gonna settle because. The wet well should not move because it's in native ground. The rest of the building is on backfill, which is gonna settle. And it's gonna settle more and more as the time goes on. It's just you want to kind of limit how much that goes. That's why we're suggesting at least around the wet well so that it doesn't affect any. Whatever it needs to, you'll start seeing maybe some cracking in the flooring, but that can easily go back and repairs as it comes. But uh this repairing the whole thing, I I do not believe is physically possible.
Well, I guess.
Financially possible.
You're kind of touching on that, but what what do you see as the consequences? You know, if we look at, if we do the fifty eight thousand dollar repair and we look at this again in ten and twenty years. What are what are the consequences to that structure?
For the fifty eight thousand dollar repair, you're only repairing the cracks. And you're allowing the building to move, but that's not addressing the building settling. The pit's not gonna go anywhere, but the rest of your building might still settle a little bit more and more. Right now, it's settled an inch and a half to two inches. Depending on where you're looking. And say you go another ten years, it might be down four inches. And then you got slabs coming up everywhere.
With the function of that building, is that, does that disrupt the critical mission of the facility?
It's gonna disrupt the piping. Well, the pipes are coming through the the main pit and then there's some underground piping coming out and going to the other structures. Where the foundation it might hit some of those pipes.
Obviously, we don't have detailed engineering drawings here, but you just said that the pit is is solid.
The pit is solid because it's down forty feet into native soil.
Yeah. How does the settling of the building affect affect the piping? I guess where is that piping that's affected?
The settling of the building would be where the piping is coming out of the building, going to the other structures. Uh.
Okay.
There's more than one room at the wastewater treatment plant. It's comprised of several different rooms and pipes run through the walls, so.
Just for. Brad Anderson, Public Works Director. Just for clarification, I think our biggest concern is um. Exactly what he's talking about. The piping underneath coming out of that pit that the pit stabilized. But with the building moving, them pipes are being put in at bind. Um if something happens. Um because of the structure continuing to settle. Pipes being put in a bind and uh potentially cracking, breaking. Then we put our whole facility at a at a risk of being shut down. And uh. That's absolutely what we don't want to happen is a a shutdown plant. We've basically, we've got it figured that if anything happens with that pit or. That specific area of the pumping ability, we have about um a half a day. About twelve hours before. Everything that's coming from residences, businesses, we're talking sewage, drainage, everything um on both of these situations. That um if we fix this now, we should not disrupt how the plant um works. Um and we can, no matter what we do contractor wise, we should be able to get in there and fix what we need to and have the plan operational. If we don't do something with it, we take the risk of having something operational not function at a later date, so.
When was the structure built?
Yes. I believe so. Ultimately, I I my personal belief, I'm not an engineer, but um. The ground was, I'm sorry, the building was put on um a large area of backfill um that the compaction rate. Probably wasn't quite where it was supposed to be, but I can't, I can't tell you that. If you guys go out to that facility, you'll see when you're down on the road and you're driving to the facility, the building's up on the hill. And partially, I'm guaranteed that that design was built that way because of the flood area out there along the river. Um makes total sense, so. Um I'm in agreement um with what he said about the rest of the building. Doesn't necessarily need it, you know, the rest of it is. Um a shop area, an office area, a lab area. I mean, those things, like anything, it's it's settling, but I think it's withstandable. And my our biggest situation is the main function room for that whole building even existing. Is where this problem is. And and if we, if we don't take care of something, um we we risk a. More situations and causes that'll cost us more money i- in a nutshell.
Brad, that was maybe built in two thousand and eight.
My functional.
Like got a CO in oh eight.
Yeah. Yeah, so it could have been functional at that time. I don't, I don't. I've seen those dates also, calendar years.
I guess my concern is that we've got another building that's less than twenty years old that's already failing. And I guess I'm just. I feel like there should be some liability for the initial engineering on the project and shouldn't necessarily be coming out of taxpayers.
Yeah, I think we kind of looked into whether or not there was any warranty that we could find left on the amount of years. We weren't able to find anything um narrowing it down. Um we, trust me, we went that route. Um in the grand scheme of things, when you're looking at buildings and you, I guess you think that a fifteen, twenty year old building shouldn't have problems, but um. Yeah, we're there, so.
Had some po- uh some discussion about the reaction we. And if we do actually go through with the repair, we can do this without interrupting the process. So the the plant should be functional during the whole time we're doing the repair.
And that hundred eighty one thousand dollar figure, does that include the? Um the portion that was in that fifty eight thousand dollars to fill in the cracks? I thought it's all separate.
Three separate ones.
Okay.
Option one, option two includes option one plus the addition of. Isn't that what we've talked about?
No.
The way it's written, it says the estimated cost to perform the above repairs, which is the fifty eight thousand. Did a technical, geotechnical investigation and to stabilize the pump room walls with the addition. Of helical piles around the pump room and structural polyurethane foam to fill voids into the slab is one eighty one. Is this, I guess.
Okay.
While you're looking.
You are correct. You're.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
It does include that fifty eight.
It doesn't include the engineering. We've added fifty thousand dollars in it for engineering.
I just wanted to make sure that one eighty one wasn't on top of the fifty eight.
Yeah, you're you're absolutely right. I misspoke.
What is the timeline for getting this out to bid and doing the work?
I don't have that answer for you right now.
You're not gonna be a part of that, I guess.
Don't know yet.
I I think we, what we're looking for here today, well, we wanted to inform you first today. Get this in front of you and then obviously we'd like to see something go forward. Um. If if we decide to go um with BG, I think in in part of the agreement that um was willing is they would. Then help us like in any bid process that we've gone through before. Um they'd help with the um getting information to. Potential contractors that they have contacts with and this sort of stuff, so that that's a. Um I mean, honestly, we'd like to do something as soon as we can, but.
It's a pretty standard process. We would, if approved on the twenty eighth, we would uh to move forward with this. We would, we would contract with BG to perform the the engineering design and and uh bid and construction services portion of the. Of this project. They would talk to the contractors and and they would provide that administration for us and then. As a commission, you would vote to approve. Whenever bid was recommended or one of the bids that came back uh for us. So if we go on the twenty eighth, you're probably looking at sometime first part of first quarter next year before this thing starts.
Can you explain the additional fifty thousand dollars in engineering?
Engineering was not included in that hundred eighty one thousand, so I asked for them to give me a an estimate on what their uh design and engineering and uh. Contract services administration costs would be, and it came in at about forty three thousand dollars, forty three five. And then I bumped it up another fifteen percent just uh to cover any, anything that might happen. I mean, any other incidentals or any other. Uh issues that might pop up.
I guess I'm just confused why the engineer's opinion of cost doesn't include the engineering.
As far as the design fee, no, we didn't. We were just asked to provide us. Find a repair, a cost for that repair. It didn't include the design fees. That's what you'd have to go out and get a proposal for that.
What sort of, I guess, guarantees, warranties do we have on the work that is provided if BG does the work?
What do you?
I'm sorry.
BG will not do the construction, Commissioner. That'll go out on bid for another company.
Okay, so you've done this before for other cities, other, yeah.
Yes.
So what sort of guarantees would those contractors provide so that we're not doing this again in two years or five years? If if we do the, your proposed fix, what?
I cannot. What anybody will guarantee for anything. I cannot guarantee anything uh uh myself. I cannot warranty anything for myself. Because I will not try to bring on any liability to our company.
Right, but we're paying you fifty thousand dollars to make sure we don't have to do this again, right? So what what are the guarantees that, I mean, we should have some sort of.
Guarantee that we can give you a set of plans that meet the standard. Quality, standard of care for projects similar to this situation.
Okay, but if it happens again, we're just writing another check.
I don't believe you'll have it happen again.
That's what I want to know.
Now, the way I've just stated and the way I've dis- exist, excuse me. Provide the necessary resistance so it will not settle anymore. I'm not guaranteeing that it's gonna come back up to the right levels, but it will. Arrest the settlement, which is what you mainly want to do.
And whichever construction company is actually doing or contract companies doing the work. That would, at that time during that bidding process, we could look into into their bids and see if there are.
Right. So what what you're looking at here is that the fix that we're proposing is a helical pile foundation repair, basically. And there are a lot of companies around the state of Kansas alone that does that type of services. We've done it. Over for Emporia State University, Manhattan, or excuse me, in Manhattan, and uh we've done it several times and.
Will your RFP, or does your typical RFP have any guarantees, any requirements of the contractors for guarantees?
Also understand that those helical piles are delegated design. So the P, the contractors bidding on it have their engineers designing those. Uh helical piles. So every. Contractor that bids on it with their own helical pile provider has their own engineers to have their own contracts and their own. Uh I won't gonna say guarantees or whatever, but. They have their own contracts.
Have any other questions for Johnny, while he's up here? Thank you.
Thank you. Great time.
And our next item is two C pay plan resolution. City Clerk, more.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is the resolution that would uh provide for a three percent adjustment to the pay plan across the board in all of the the levels of the pay plan. Uh the three percent was approved in the twenty twenty five budget earlier this fall.
Did that take into account that mid-year adjustment that we did?
Yes, the mid-year, the the pay plan was put into place and this is a three percent adjustment off of that, the new pay plan that was put into place in July. Not all positions received an increase in July. And this is a three percent across the board to keep up with where we need to be.
Have any questions for Shaila? Okay. Nothing. We will move to item two D highway functional classification, public works director Anderson.
I've got this. Mayor, I've got this. So. Uh, you'll see in your packets, uh, attached documentation and an explanation for the federal requirement of the functional, functional classification system and urban boundaries. Uh, we were waiting to do this until we got the legal description for the new urban boundary as proposed by KDOT. Those are also in your packets. Uh, once you approve it as a city commission, it goes to the county commission for their approval and is sent into, uh, the state. So. What questions do you have?
Have any questions on that item? I looked up, I looked at the maps in the, uh, packet that went out online. Um, are there any? Major adjustments that you'd think that deserve noting?
Not really. It just extends it. It matches more. Well, I say more, it does match a lot of our city, um. The one we just did, the boundary resolution that we just did, it matches a lot of that. Um, it extends a few places, but it makes sense. When Brad and I sat down with the engineer, it made sense from those. What KDOT was proposing.
This documentation says fix illegal termination. Can you explain what that is?
No, I can't.
Okay. What are we looking at?
Uh, it's the page right before the map.
I don't look at it online before.
Brad, I don't know if that means anything to you.
Where are you at, Commissioner?
Uh, it's the page right in front of the, the map. It shows, uh, change IDs and then like the first one is Northwest Fourteenth, starting at Fair Road, ending at North Van Buren Street. Uh, current class, minor arterial, proposed class, major collector. Justification fix illegal termination.
Okay. And I, I gotta apologize. I don't have the map with me. I just have literature.
Yeah, it's, it's the page right in front of it. It's proposed urban and county functional classification changes.
It's the change in classifications, Brad, on the road. And I believe the legal, uh, termination, uh, or fix illegal termination just ends it at city limits.
Okay. I guess I'm not.
I can show you my page here.
Yeah, what can I? Or. Okay. Okay. So what was your question, Commissioner? I'm sorry again.
Uh, it says the justification for these changes are to fix illegal terminations. I guess I'm just curious what those illegal terminations are.
Um. I guess I'm not, I've seen a lot of these over the years, but I do, I'm not sure what they're meaning by the illegal termination. Um. I don't know if that, uh, well, I can't speak. I don't, I don't know if they're, what their justification for that term is. Most of our routes that you can see in there, um, when you look at the classification. Either went from the minor to the major or the local to the minor. That's pretty much. I don't know if that's because they're making a change is why that terminology is there. I, I can't answer. I don't know, honestly.
Thank you. Have any further questions on that item? Seeing none, I would, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote, Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. We're adjourned.